Madam Chair, I make a motion we come back, we come out of executive session back into regular session.
Have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This certification of closed session pursuant to subsection two point two dash thirty seven twelve D of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended. Each member of the Board of Supervisors upon roll call certifies that to base of their knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirement under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only such public business matters that were identified in the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the Board of Supervisors. Any member of the Board of Supervisors who believes that there was a departure from the requirements shall state so prior to the vote indicating the substance of that departure that in his or her judgment has taken place. Are there any supervisors who believe a departure has taken place? Seeing none, if you agree that the matters heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting were pursuant only to the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, please signify by saying yea or yes. Tim Lovelace?
Yes.
Luanne Wallace?
Yes.
Carl Ray?
Yes.
Steve Breeding?
Yes.
David Eaton?
Yes.
Orish Christian?
Yes.
Rebecca Di?
Yes.
Ma'am, you have approval to turn to regular session.
As will stand now for our invocation and remain standing for the pledge, please.
Thank you, dear Lord, for giving us this day. Thank you, Lord, for giving us our blessed lives. Thank you for giving the Son that died on the cross for us and then arose on the third day. Bless us, help us to do thy will. Help us to do the will of our county. Help us to make the decisions that will lead us forward and to do the best by our citizens. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Alright, we do need to make some amendments to our agenda. We have a, a resolution that has been presented before us. We also have a, an appointment for the CPMT meeting with Dr. Shelton presented this to us. So if at this time we have a motion to amend the agenda and we will add the, uh, resolution under the County Attorney, Katie, is that okay with you? With number two, under the County Attorney Reports and Requests. And we'll add the letter for the appoint, uh, board appointment as number four under our committee appointments by the board. So do I have a motion to accept the agenda as it is amended with these items?
Some move.
Alright, David, do we have a second?
Second.
Tim, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, the first thing that we have on our agenda now is our public hearing. And it is with the Russell County litter ordinance. And we'll have Katie, uh, address and talk about the legislative changes that need to be made to this.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I've got the changes, I don't know, Lonzo, can you pull them up? So, um, I made the changes to the litter ordinance and tracked changes so you would be able to see it. Um, I just want to start off to say that other than the, the penalties change that the General Assembly enacted, I did not make any substantive changes to the litter ordinance. Part of it was just correcting, um, a couple of timelines and, and statutes that are no longer in existence. On page one, I corrected, um, that code section because the code section thirty three point one dash three forty six, that doesn't exist anymore. So I updated it with the correct, um, code section. And then I don't have another change until... Um, I, I put a note on page nine, and this is just a suggestion, it's not anything that you have to do. Um, under that section, um, it talks about any person who is guilty of violating that section, she'll be guilty of a class two misdemeanor. Uh, um, punishable as in this ordinance, and it says any second or subsequent offense shall be a class one misdemeanor. When I, when I looked up the, the state code section that's applicable to that, um, it has all offenses just being class one misdemeanors. And so I just suggested that that be amended to, um, reflect that all violations are class one instead of class two. Just so there could not be just, you know, dis- disparate results because there's a state statute that can be enforced by a police officer who, um, writes a citation for this. But this, this ordinance can be enforceable by citizens, and so I just didn't want there to be different outcomes where one person would have a, a more serious offense. But it, that's just advisory, and if you want to leave it as it is, there's no, there's no requirement that, um, that you have to change that. The next change I made was on, um, page ten, and in that section, it reflected, um, that, um, an owner or occupant would have, um, ten days um, to clean, to rectify a situation before legal action was taken. But everywhere else in the ordinance, it reflects a fourteen day time period, and the notice, um, required to be given under the ordinance reflects a fourteen day notice period. So I changed that to fourteen, and I do think you should do that, so that will be consistent. And I didn't make it more restrictive, I made it more, I made it less restrictive in that situation. The next change I made, um, was in the notice of itself on page fifteen, and I just put the code sections from the top. Um, it had a code section that did not exist, it didn't make any sense on why it was there. So it just said pursuant to the Code of Virginia and all of the code sections that are the basis of forming the litter ordinance. So that was the only change, and I do suggest you make that just because it, it had an incorrect code section. Under, on page sixteen, um, D, this is where, this are the, these are the changes that the General Assembly made. Um, they did increase the, um, beginning fine, um, from two hundred and fifty to five hundred dollars. And, um, the maximum fine from twenty-five hundred to five thousand. And that was, that was a change that they made, and that cannot, if, if you do adopt that, if you do proceed to go ahead and adopt that tonight, that cannot go in effect until July one. Because that's when that becomes, um, effective. And that's not a mandatory, it's not a mandatory fine, it's just, it can be up to that if the circumstances arise. But that's not anything, again, you have to do, um, you can't be more restrictive, you couldn't impose a ten thousand dollar fine. But if you don't want to increase it to the limits they have, but again, these are state statutes that can be enforced, and there can be different results in the county. So I mean, that's, that's just something for the board to consider. And, um, one thing I would recommend doing in some form or fashion, and I think this would be a good thing, is our ordinance did not have this, and the statute prior to being amended already had this. But in the lieu, in lieu of the imposition of confinement in jail, the court may order the defendant to perform, um, a mandatory minimum of forty hours of community service. Um, what the statute has now prior to the amendments made this, this year is ten hours. So again, you are free to set that at anywhere you want, it just could not be more than forty hours. But, um, in that situation, you know, you, people can avoid, you know, fine or jail time and can, um, if somebody was found guilty of littering, they could perform community service. And then on the, the penalties part, I just made that conform with what I just talked about, that the maximum, um, fine cannot be more than five thousand dollars. And that's not applicable if you don't adopt, um, the other. And the last two provisions, and this is page eighteen, I'm not sure if I said that on page eighteen, um, I did add a couple of sections in it to state most of the se, most of the violations in this ordinance are considered to be a class two misdemeanor. And so I put in there unless otherwise specifically provided, a violation of any provision of this ordinance shall constitute a class two misdemeanor. That way, that's a catch-all if something's not properly defined. And then the last, the last, um, section I added was adjudication in part. If any clause, sentence, paragraph, subdivision, section, or part of this ordinance shall be judged by any court of competent jurisdiction to be invalid, the judgment shall not affect, impair, or invalidate the remainder thereof, but shall be confined in its operation to the clause, sentence, paragraph, subdivision, section, part thereof directly involved in the controversy in which the judgment shall have been rendered. And then I changed if you were to adopt some of the changes that I, that I put in there, that the ordn, this would be effective July the first, because that's the soonest that some of that could be done. Um, the last part that I added, it's just to say that if, if the law were to change, or the court were to decide that something was unconstitutional, the rest of the ordinance could remain in effect without you all having to come back and, and revisit it. So again, those are my suggested changes, again, fixing the code sections, I think, is something we should definitely do. But as far as, um, the impositions of fines and things like that, I mean, that's, as long as you don't exceed the statutory authority, I think that's within your full discretion to decide what's appropriate.
Alright, thank you. With her clarification at this time, we'll open the floor for any public comment on the, uh, uh, litter ordinance, if anyone wants to speak. Yes, sir.
Couple of questions for you. I assume that this ordinance that you passed is mandated by the state, not optional? I assume that this ordinance is mandated by state and not optional, uh, choice that you, the counties make.
Sir, I don't, I don't believe that it's, it's, it's a mandatory ordinance, but it's an ordinance that's already in effect, it's not a new ordinance. This has been adopted previously, um, it's been re-adopted too, it's been adopted previously. I just, when I reviewed it, I realized that code sections had changed since its adoption, and it just made me look at it to see if there was any other problems that needed to be fixed.
If it's not mandated, why is the county deciding to add these additional changes to it? Not unless, well, I'll talk about changing the, the mandates for the, the individual citizen to bring charges, and that's another problem I've got with. So again, I think that there's an overreach of the government. If there's not mandated, why is the county enforcing it? If there's a state law on the regulations, I would take it's the state that enforces it. Why is the county not decided to jump into it, to do it to it? That's my question, so I, I do have a problem with that, so, you know, as a taxpayer, a landlord here in the county, I'm definitely against expanding the control of this litter ordinance, that's my opinion. Again, as a private citizen, I think you, I want to thank the board for letting me speak. I think you do have good intentions, and that's great. But I'm, I'm really concerned with the, uh, with the fact that you may be opening up a can of worms, opening a Pandora's box, more so than we need to be. And I'm gonna give an example, uh, our neighboring county, next to us, Washington County, passed a noise ordinance with good intentions. And the north, north ordinance said, you know, they, we need to control noise and things, just like you're talking about here, so they did that. Well, they had people moving, now this one gentleman lived out rural part of the county, very rural. He'd had a, a dog kennel raising pups to sell for about thirty years. With the noise ordinance come on, then they had some new people that moved in the area. Not sure where the new from, but some new people moved in, he said, well, we don't like the do, the dogs. The first time they come about, they, they, they went to the Commonwealth Attorney and asked him to address it, and basically this Commonwealth Attorney said, they really just don't have the, the, the force to deal with. And they passed an ordinance, uh, you know, somewhere during this time. Well, when they passed the ordinance, then some new people moved in, said, hey, we don't like these dogs barking. They went and took a warrant and gave it to, to the sheriff, then the sheriff then had no choice but to enforce it. So this gentleman lived there his entire life, thirty plus years, raising dogs, all of a sudden, an outsider moves in and says, I don't like the dogs. So took him to court, and as far as I know, he lost. And then now he's losing his livelihood as a dog breeder, living in rural parts of the county, because the good intentions of the board was to do something about it. With the board members told, he said, we messed up, we messed up big time, we got people involved doing something like this, he created some problems that we didn't need and didn't expect to happen. Says, I don't, we gotta change that, we need to make some changes, try to, to address that problem. But the problem is, we can't do anything about the gentleman right now because that was the ordinance, that was the law, that was enforced, the judge ruled, he violated the law. So at the same token now, we're gonna do the same thing here with good intentions, you're gonna create some problems. If there is an issue out there, if there's a danger to the public, it needs to be addressed. But if you have state laws, why are we assuming state regulations and adding to it or changing to it? If you're not making it strong to state, then that tells me it's optional. So you're choosing to go against the citizens of the county, where there's already state laws or the, or the regulations booked. So that's the problem, I'm gonna mention one more thing, I can read something to you. This is, again, I hope you indulge me to read this, this is the US, or the Virginia Bill of Rights, Section eleven, due process of law. Obligation of contracts, taking or, or damaging of private property prohibit discrimination. Jury trial in civil cases, that no person shall be deprived of his life, liberty, or property without due process of law. That the General Assembly shall not pass any laws impairing the obligation of contracts and the right to be free from anti-governmental governmental discrimination. Upon the basis of religious conviction, race, color, sex, or national origin, shall be abridged, except that the mere separation of the sexes shall not be considered discrimination. That in controversy respecting property in suits between man and man, trial jury is preferable to any other ought to be held sacred. The General Assembly may limit the number of juries for civil cases in courts or records to not less than five. That the General Assembly shall pass no laws whereby private property, the right to which is fundamental, shall be damaged, taken away, or of the public use. No private property shall be damaged or taken for public use without just compensation to the owners thereof. No more private properties might be taken than necessary than to achieve the stated public use. Just compensation shall be, shall be no less than the value of property taken. Lost profits and lost access and damage to the rest of, residual caused by the taking. Terms, not, not prob, not, terms, lost profits and lost access. So again, I'll stop at that. My point is, in the past two, three decades, you state how you want to defend the Constitution and not defend the Constitution. But yet you're going right against this Constitution, your state Constitution, by attacking individual citizens. If we already have state laws in the book, why do we need more? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wants to speak? Okay, state your name, please, thank you.
Uh, good evening, uh, Board of Supervisors members, my name's Charles Collins. Uh, I live in the Gravelick area, Castlewood, twenty-four ninety Gravelick Road is my residence. I've never appeared before the Board of Supervisors before, but I've been a resident of the county for probably fifty-six years, okay? Uh, I do have some concerns, and I haven't read this ordinance, uh, I did understand that we're, y'all were debating on, on, uh, preparing this ordinance and passing it, uh, this evening, and I'm sure there's a lot of discussion that you need to hear about the ordinance. I haven't read it, don't know a lot about it, but I do have some concerns from where we live in, in, uh, in my district. One is, our, uh, convenience site at the Bonneventure area at Carbo has been closed. Now, I know this doesn't directly relate to the ordinance, but then again, it does too, I think it all correlates together. And I went over there to take my trash one day, and, and the gates are locked, and the dirt's piled where the containers used to be, and there's no longer a container. So now we're at the Hamlin site, because it's a long way for the residents over in our area to travel all the way to Cleveland, to the new site at Cleveland, which is, is, I'm glad that they've got a site in Cleveland. Well, now, down at the Hamlin area, our cans are full all the time, they're overran, the barriers have gotten into the trash. If you'll go drive through there, our area has been a pretty area, but now trash is all over the side of the hill. I have talked to my, my supervisor, uh, Ms. Wallace, and she's aware of this conversation, and I'm bringing it up today. I'd like to have that addressed, that trash in those woods came from those trashcans, and it looks terrible. If it was in Lebanon or in any other part of the county, it would be addressed, and I'd like to see it addressed in the Castlewood area, because we, we need that addressed down there too, okay? That's one thing that needs to happen, also, those cans-
Sir, sir, I'm sorry, um, if it was gonna be short, we're, we're having a public hearing just on the litter ordinance, we will have citizens- citizens comment to address all other issues that citizens may have for the board at a later time in the meeting.
Well, this has to do with litter, because when people come to the trashcans and the gates are locked, they get ill, and they throw their trash out of the vehicle, they throw it on the side of the road. Our roads are trashed continuously with trash on the side of the road. So I think it's something that needs to be looked at, uh, we do need a convenience center that's open down there. I've gone, and it's been closed because the cans are full. Now, along the same lines from what you just pointed out to me, uh, you know, I've lived there fifty-six years, but there are some residents now, and I don't know what's going on, but there is trash everywhere. And, you know, I'm a taxpayer, my, my property's not any better than anybody else's property, but I don't want my property devalued because other people aren't trying to keep their property going. Uh, you know, and I saw, I know this is a difficult time with the pandemic, I know people have economic problems, I understand that. But if we have laws on the book now, or if we need to create new laws, we need to enforce these laws and have people clean their trash up. Because I try to be a responsible taxpayer, and I'd like to see other people do the same thing. But now the trashcans are a problem in my area, and I'd like to see that addressed because that, that is a big problem in our area, okay?
Thank you, sir.
And that's all I'd like to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? State your name, and there's three minutes on the clock.
Yes, ma'am, I understand. Uh, first, I want to say, uh, Madam Chairman, Supervisors, thank y'all for the job you do, appreciate that. Uh, I want to follow Mr. Collins somewhat on, uh, the trash in the area. Uh, we do need this litter ordinance, the ordinance in whole. Uh, and I took the time and I read the whole thing, I've got a couple of questions on that, but I support you, and I encour, as, as a voter, I'm encouraging the supervisors to come together on this, let's get, let's get something worked out, and let's enforce this, this, uh, ordinance. Um, but now, on the other hand, I want to follow Mr. Hughes on something. One section of the ordinance that I read, and, uh, I've dealt with, I'm not a lawyer, but I've dealt with the law for thirty-plus years. And when we get into opening it up for citizens to, uh, write a citation, I think there needs to be a lot more clarification on that. Because we're gonna have, at Don Andy Griffith's show, citizens arrest, you know, and we're gonna have that with our neighbors. You know, do you want me as your neighbor to come up and say, hey, you gotta clean this up, here's your, here's your citation? We can't do that, we need some more clarification. But again, I support the, the, we have to have this ordinance, we gotta get this county cleaned up. Uh, if you drive on the highways and stuff, the trash you see, it's sad. I've lived in Russell County my whole life, love the county, love it, want to continue living in Russell County. But it's an embarrassment, if I went to sell my land and they started at Hamlin, and come up and they see the trash at Hamlin, and see two or three houses that could fall under this ordinance, I'd probably get high. But I do encourage y'all, please, please, let's come to some kind of common sense and let's work this ordinance out, thank you.
If you don't care, sir, state your name and address for-
Jeff Kaiser, twenty-nine forty-two Gravelick Road, Castlewood, Virginia.
I thank most of you on the Board of Supervisors, knows me, know me, and been around me, and it's good to see you guys, good evening to all of you. I'm not gonna take up much time, the only time I come aboard Supervisors, as you well know, begging for money for school system. And, which we had to beg pretty hard, sometimes we got it, sometimes we didn't. Now, what the county is true, I lived there too. Now, one other thing I want to mention, so I can depart and let you do what you need to do. I had brought up to two of the Supervisors here, Mr. Lovelace and Luanne, about a serious curve down at Hamlin. And it's never been addressed, it's been a long time, if you don't fix it, somebody's gonna get killed out of it. This is not what you-
Okay, sir, this is on the litter ordinance, I'm sorry, I hate to-
I'm just gonna tell the Supervisors that, and-
I hate to interrupt you.
So they'll be aware of it and talk to the others.
Okay.
It's on six fifteen, Luanne, you need to make sure you and Tim, let's, these people know about this, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alright, anyone else on the litter ordinance? State your name, please, and there is a three-minute time limit, thank you.
Michelle Vance, ninety-nine Willow Springs Drive, I just have a question about the litter ordinance. Since I am on a private road that the county, uh, will not keep up with, and does not do anything to, and refuses to do anything to, and won't listen to anything about it, that means I'm exempt from this, correct?
No, the litter ordinance, it, it applies to private, some sections of it apply to private property as well. There's some that only apply to the highways and, and, and public property, but there are sections that apply to public property.
Well, our entire development is private property, road and all, all of it's private property.
I'm just saying that some of the ordinance, not all the provisions of the ordinance, but some of the provisions of the ordinance do apply to private property, so that would apply to yours.
So in other words, get a lawyer and take y'all to court, make sure we're not part of it, right?
Well, you, you're certainly free to consult with an attorney over anything you want to.
Well, okay, I will be anyway.
Alright. She's got, anyone else? Alright, seeing none, we'll close our public hearing on the, uh, litter ordinance. Alright, we, oh, I'm sorry. Please, state your name and, uh, your address.
Kelly Trent, Castlewood, uh, North Castlewood District.
Go ahead, sir.
Well, I've talked to our representative from my district, uh, for years about this. And, uh, I confronted Mr. Shai Kennedy numerous times, never did get an answer on anything. I got, I asked him, uh, for the ordinance so I could read it, I never did get that. I also asked him to give me a list of the number of people that were being charged, or the number of people who were being billed, I never did get that. And I asked him about it, and he said, well, he said, we have no control over that. And I told him, I said, well, who enacted this? Does the Board of Supervisors have any control at all? Never got an answer on that. Well, I went to Mr. Glisby, talked to him, I never did get a straight answer from him either. But, uh, I talked to my representative, which is Ms. Lo, Wallace, when she first was elected, and she said, we need to do something about this. Well, it didn't get done, but then we come up, and I talked to Mr. Loudermilk about it. And he said, we're bringing it up, come to the meeting. And I about missed it, I was cutting brush, and it, my time got away from me, but he did explain it to me, and, uh, I did get a straight answer. And it's something that's been here for years, and it's never been implemented, period. Uh, it needs to be straightened out, so it's gonna come up for you right now, and it needs to be implemented and explained to the people what it is. Uh, but I also, on the litter, I followed the truck two weeks ago from Lebanon back to Castlewood, and it was a ton truck, and it had a tarp on it. And it was a ton truck and it had a tarp on it. And it turned up to Lynnville out there, but before it got down there, the flap on the back of it was just up and down and two bags of trash fell out on the road, which I don't guess they saw it, they went on. But some guy, it was right in the middle of the road and he was coming toward it and he stopped and got out, and got out and picked it up and put it back in. But I've also, I've seen trash cans up from Castlewood up through there, bags of trash. And as most of our people go and pick up trucks and they go down the road doing sixty mile an hour and a bag of trash, it falls out on the side of the road. Uh, that's, that's another problem. But, uh, the main thing I wanted to talk about was the litter ordinance. And I, I hope you people can get it straightened out and get it implemented and get it to where everybody understands it and, uh, put something out on it so the people knows what it's, what it's for and what, what we're doing. And that's basically what I got to say, but I'm, I'm pleased that y'all bring it up. Cause I've been all these years and I've talked to everybody, even Freddie Arington, when he was standing there for just a while, I talked to him about it.
All right. Sorry, sir. I'm sorry. Your three minutes rep. I apologize. Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jimmy Gwynn. I live on fifty-five eighty-nine Lower Copper Creek. And I was up in Detroit thirteen years. And you don't get a whole lot done by trying to put more law on people. You have to have the cooperation, excuse me, take it down. You have to have a cooperation of people. And if you've got the cooperation of the people, they won't throw their trash out on the highway. You want people to throw trash on the highway, just tell everybody don't. You got bears dragging trash out of the garbage can, kill a cockeyed bear. It ain't nothing but trash anyway. One got a haul to the mines over and one got a boy's brand-new pickup truck. He had a case of Mountain Dew in it. And when he got done with his Toyota truck, you couldn't tell what kind of truck it was. He tore the doors off of it and everything else. We don't need that. And you give the people a break. You try to help everybody. And you administer the law to the good of all people, for the people, encouraged by the people. And you'd be surprised how many people won't throw their McDonald's bag out coming up the highway. You just say, let's make it all better for everybody. Let's don't get down on nobody. I was up there in Detroit. Time they got through with it, they had thirty thousand dollars in there. Or thirty million dollars, rainy day for them. The time they got through with all their laws and everything else, our police and firemen got one percent of their retirement. Worked thirty-five years and you get one percent. Try to make Russell County, Virginia, a little bit better than that. I thank you for your time and I appreciate all of you. God bless.
Thank you, sir. All right, seeing no more comments, we'll close our public hearing on the, uh, litter ordinance, the updates, the suggested changes. All right, we'll close the public hearing. And Katie, we need a motion to accept the recommended changes.
If that's the board's pleasure, I mean, and you can make a motion to accept all or some. They're not, some of them are recommendations. Again, the revising the code sections that are no longer in effect and are no longer a part of the Virginia code. I think that does need to be fixed, but a lot of this, like I said, is with your discretion on how if you want to increase the penalties and if you want to make those changes, but, um, there would be, there would need to be a motion to approve the changes, whichever ones the boards wants, wants to take up.
And that it will not go into effect until July one, correct?
If, if you adopt the provisions that are in the, that were updated by the General Assembly this year, if you do not adopt any of those, then you could make it effective as of today.
May I ask a question, ma'am?
Yes.
Katie?
Yeah.
Everybody needs to understand that this ordinance is in effect right now.
It's already in effect.
Originally approved in twenty-ten and it was redone, I guess, modified in twenty-twenty. So, so it's in, it's in effect right now.
Yes, it was, I think we recodified it in twenty-twenty and I didn't make any change, changes to. And I, I guess I need to, and I said substantive changes, but what that means, what I'm, and I, and I apologize. What that means is I didn't change what it takes to violate the ordinance. I didn't, I didn't make it more restrictive that you would, that you could do less and you would be violating it. It's the same, it's the same terms as far as that goes that was enacted back in. I think, I think two thousand ten may have been the original enactment of it. So none of that has changed. It's already in effect. It is an ordinance. And the only thing that I updated was things that co- one contradicted each other and two, um, were incorrect. And then I added the provision that if a part of the ordinance ever was invalidated, that the rest would remain in effect. Because you want to, if you're going to have an ordinance, it should be enforceable. And so that, that maintains the enforceability of it. As far as, as, as far as enhancing the, the potential of punishments, that's, that's completely up to you all. But that's, that's something that the General Assembly did and so that's part of my job as county attorney is to advise you of changes in the law and, and see how you all want to proceed with that. But this is a valid ordinance. It's been in effect for more than ten years now.
I have a question for Mr. Lester. How, I'm looking here, it's on page thirteen and it's titled Enforcement of Litter, Prosecution, Presumption, Enforcement. And it says prosecution of violation or any provision of this act may be initiated by a, a law enforcement officer, litter control officer, or private citizen. What is the process? A private citizen is not going to be able to enforce this. They will just report the action to the litter control officer, right?
No, it, it would just be, there are certain causes of action that you go and you swear, uh, a person goes and swears out a complaint that if, you know, if you were assaulted and battered, you do not have to have a police officer do that. You would have to go to the magistrate. And you would have to swear under oath by affidavit that these events occurred and then they would, the citation would be issued and then they, there would be a trial. The judge would ultimately decide if the ordinance was violated or not. If a private citizen chose to do it, that's how they would have to do it. They can't just write a ticket and say you have to go to court. They would have to get the magistrate to issue it.
Right.
Just like they would for assault and battery, trespass. There's, there's several misdemeanors that a person can go and, and get a complaint, and take out a complaint or a warrant, um, on, on a person. And so that's, that's what you could do as well. So that's how a private citizen enforces it.
If you had, I got a question. Uh, I served on town council in Hollicker fourteen years and we had ordinances dating back to nineteen thirty and forty. The, the, the real issue with all that is you have ordinances on the books, but you don't enforce what's there. We didn't create the ordinance. The ordinance was there before us, but, you know, apparently, you know, there's going to have to be a level enforcement. Now, my concern here is citizens authority to, if you've got disgruntled neighbors, and I think everybody at one point in time does, that's just going to give them a opportunity to go after their neighbor in, in a way. I mean, filling out an affidavit wouldn't bother them at all if they have, have an issue with a junk car or something that they kept, going to redo or whatever. I think there's going to have to be some definition to this. I'm also with increased penalties coming down from Richmond. Uh, and then what is it, a one-year jail or either pulling community service?
Yeah, the, the, the period in jail did not change. Only the fine amount changed and then the amount of community service that the judge could order changed. Because it's still considered a class-one misdemeanor.
To me, I think Richmond is digging into a lot of overreach when I think we, we have the authority and the ability to take care of our citizens. And I think communication is a key and talking to these people. We had a lot of sites cleaned up by communicating and dealing with it without having some of this in there that could pose a, a very dangerous situation, I think, between neighbors.
Well, and, and, and that's part of it. The ordinance requires a notice to be given, so the, before, that's, that's, that's a good point to bring up. Before a citizen could even go to the magistrate to enforce it, they would have to give their neighbor a notice pursuant to this ordinance that you have fourteen days to clean this up or I'm going to go and, and, and swear out a complaint at the magistrate. And it, it's just like, I mean, it's, when you think about neighbors, trespass, I mean, no, there's no, they can go and, you know, unfortunately, there, sometimes people do use the legal system to make up things, but that's what the, the court is there for. And that's why both sides get to testify and provide their side, um, of that. And there's also, um, you know, this is not, it's not dealt within this ordinance, but there are, um, civil causes of action for malicious, malicious prosecution. I mean, if they just clearly made something up. And also, there's perjury that can be attached to that. I mean, if they can prove that somebody perjured themselves in an affidavit, then that's a criminal charge for that person swearing out that complaint. And so I, I, I do see where you're coming from on neighbors being able to do that, but there are some safeguards there that are there with the general criminal system.
Another question, Katie. Now, the state has an ordinance in place. Is that correct?
There are, um, there's, there, that one primarily deals with highways and public lands. Um, fifteen point two, nine oh one and nine twenty-seven are what give local, um, local governments the authority to enact the ordinances. The, the criminal statute I'm talking about, that, um, the police officers could enforce them, the one that changed, the one that's amended, that does exist independent of this, but that only applies to certain things.
I guess, I guess my question is, if a citizen wanted to initiate something, they could do it under state law.
Yes.
Regardless of whether or not we have our local law. And so, in my mind, maybe it's better that we- I don't particularly like the idea. I don't want this thing weaponized. Uh, I don't want it to be a weapon, you know, one, you know, these little feuds going on all the time. You know, I don't want one person to be trying to get at another person. But what, what kind of notification process? Would it have to be advertised in the paper or just?
For the, the notification before the, the action is taken?
Yes.
It's actually in the ordinance and that was the one thing. It's on page fifteen and it actually states everything. This is the, this is the notification we would give.
Fill in the blank. Yeah, okay.
And so it's the address of the property owner and the responsible party and it says, you were notified to, um, remove within fourteen days of the date of this notice, all trash, garbage, um, and, and, and goes through what you need to do. And, um, now, when the county does it, obviously, there can be, um, if we have to clean it up, if it, if, if it's, if it's a situation that's so bad that it requires our intervention and we clean it up, that's done as, that is assessed as a lien on the property, just like with the taxes. Um, it's, um, if it takes, you know, if it took us a thousand, if it was something really dangerous, some kind of spill of a, a dangerous substance and we had to clean it up and it costs a thousand dollars, that would be assessed to the property owner by us. Now, if you go to court enforcing that, you're not going to be able to do that because you don't have, that's going to be the difference is the, the, the private citizen doesn't have the authority that we have to go in there and clean it up.
Their only recourse would be to go to, to the magistrate and get, and basically file suit.
Yeah, get somebody, and like, most of the offenses are class-two misdemeanors. So that would be there, is to get somebody, you know, a fine until they clean it up. I mean, if you have a situation where somebody's violating it, they can go to court, um, and, and do that. But again, there, there are processes to that. It's not as just simple as you go in and somebody's found guilty of it. There's, it's the court system. And, and I do understand, I mean, you know, if you haven't been through that system, you, you don't know all the steps that are involved. But there are, there are safeguards that it's not just as simple as I'm mad at my neighbor and I'm going to get him convicted of littering.
Well, I have, you know, I'm going to just say this. I have some people in my district, either through health or financial situations. They might not have the ability to, to do what they did. I've got some that have aged. And, you know, I've reached out to them and asked them, you know, if mountain movers could help them in any way or, or, you know, facilitate an opportunity to help clean it up. I just don't like the idea of not having that level of communication and, and, and just enforcing it and having one citizen turn on another one and say, well, I, I've wanted this cleaned up for twenty years. But this guy that I'm talking about, he's got cancer. He's, he's got, you know, he's had a hard, hard time. And I've reached out to him and, and he has some stuff out that he just don't want to get rid of. I mean, he's, he's lived there all of his life. He's accumulated these things and now he's pretty sickly. And I don't want to, you know, I, I've just reached out to him, you know, with a, a, an help. And he said, well, I don't, and Carl knows who I'm talking about. Uh, he's talked to him also. And, and he's, uh, he's, it's a pitiful situation, but he's got a neighbor there that would probably enforce it. And, and I, I'd hate to see, I, I'm real concerned about this, the citizens authority to be able to take action.
And, and, and I understand, I did not change that. That was already, that was already there.
David, will, will this help the, on the, that, uh, situation in Swords Creek that you sent pictures and you wanted us to go look at? Will this help with that?
I've already got that cleaned up.
Right there next to the school?
Well, not that one, but the other one up in Clark's Valley. No, they're working on that other one.
I have a question. If, if we do, if we don't do anything tonight, the one that's in effect stays in effect, correct? Until we can take into consideration everything that we've heard and make sure that we're good with everything that we're talking about changing and that everybody understands, like the gentleman or several people have said, you know, exactly what we're doing.
That, that's correct. It would, what, what is in place now would stay in effect. Again, the only thing I would, you know, if you want to talk about it some more, I would want to fix those code sections because again, anybody that's trying to enforce the ordinance now, they're giving a notice with incorrect code sections and that could be a defense in court. Um, so, I mean, I'm just putting that out there. So you just, if you're going, you know, the ordinance is in place and I just want it to be enforceable. Now, as far as other changes, that's completely up to you all, but, I mean, that's correct. The, the ordinance as it is stays in effect until a mo- until it's modified.
And if you did that, as, as also you have the ten-day to fourteen-day change, we're giving the residents fourteen more days. Right now, the policy is they either, they call into the county administrator's office or they call into the sheriff's department. So this will give them more time. We do work with the property owners. They, like David said, we try to go with the ones that's elderly. We try to work with the ones that have the hard time. Some of them is weathered due, so we do this, uh, by case by case. It's not coming in, you know, with a hammer each and every time. We try to work with the property owner, give them the opportunity to be able to clean them up. But that's, that's at the option of the Board of Supervisors, but I would like to keep the ten to fourteen, move it to the fourteenth day because between the weekends and them trying to get everything logistically and the code changes, those two things are very much needed.
I, I like the addition of the community service paragraph in lieu of fines. I don't like the fines going to five thousand dollars. Twenty-five hundred dollars is probably enough. Just, I, I would prefer to leave fines like they are, but I do, I do think we could allow, allow those sections to pass and, and take a look at. I'm not worried about the county. I, I think we'll do due diligence and we won't have a big hammer. But like David said, you know, there's, there's potential out there and I think, uh, maybe we can take the best of what we have here and, and work on the citizens.
Well, I will tell you, Lonzo, with you and the enforcement officer that went out there to those two localities and just talked to those people, it went very good. And they knew they had a mess and they was going to have to clean it up. And I think those types of due diligence and communication in the areas of the trash sites and the dump sites and all this stuff needs to be addressed, but you can pass a thousand resolutions, but if you don't have enforcement behind it, you're not gonna, I mean, you're just putting more ordinances on the book, you know? I mean, I think that communications is so critical in, in regards to this. And I, I liked what Tim said. I mean, this thing really needs to be done because once you do it and you adopt it, you throw it out there, it's just, it's, there you are. I mean, I, I think we ought to do our due diligence on this and, and listen to all of our citizens and citizens' concerns and, uh, and if there's area, targeted areas we need to address, we should have been doing it. uh, and if there's area, targeted areas we need to address, we should've been doing it already. I mean, if it's this, we didn't adopt the ordinance, but the ordinance is there, right?
It's already there, right, Katie? Been there?
Well, the codes ain't right, but the ordinance is there, is that correct?
Yeah, the, the codes are, the codes are incorrect, but yeah, that's, I mean, another month will not create a whole lot of issue if you want to table it. I mean, again, I, I think my recommendations will stay the same, but I'm happy to look at areas that you all think need revising, I'm happy to do that, um, but that's something the board can certainly do, that's proper.
I would like to say, my wife and I talked about, like David said, there's some people, elderly people, or maybe they don't have a pickup to load up their stuff, you know, and haul it off. I mean, they would have to hire someone, and that's where the communication come and go, to those people and see what you can work out with those people, and give them ample time, may, like Lonzo said, it may take, excuse me, more than fourteen days. But, you know, take each individual, in, in some cases, you don't, you can't take everyone as an individual, but there's certain cases that you would need to maybe address and communicate with them on an individual basis, and try to help those elderly or disabled, or don't have the equipment to move what they have accumulated over the years. Like he said, one guy just loves what he's accumulated, but they come to a point, sometime you gotta let it go. I made my statement, I've got stuff in my attic, I got stuff in my basement, I say, "I'm gonna throw away, give away, keep and sell." Those four categories, sometime we gotta make that decision, and these, some of these people will have to make that decision, to let it go. But we need to be, I guess you would say, held responsible of our actions. I mean, you know, we do things, and we're gonna have to be responsible if we do something wrong.
Uh, uh, just a couple of comments, I found a couple typos in it on, on page four under the definition of re- residential unit, it goes in there and talks about a building and forming a single inhabitable unit with facilities which are used and intended to be used for living, sleeping and cooing. So I think he meant cooking, so if you could fix that one. But what I'd ask my fellow board members, if we are able to go ahead and allow Katie to change the code numbers, so that this ordinance is enforceable. And I would like to add that paragraph about community service, because, you know, with somebody, you know, it's pretty stiff penalties, you know, twenty, even two fifty to twenty-five hundred dollars. So for me, I'd be willing to humble myself and go out there and pick up trash for forty hours. So I'd like to add that paragraph in.
And, and the, yeah, I'll change the extension from ten days to fourteen days.
Yes.
And also do the language at the last paragraph, that it's still enforceable, but the language go on.
Yes, um, the only, if you do the forty hours, um, that cannot be effective until July first. But you can go ahead and.
Yeah.
I would like, I'd like to see it fixed.
Yeah. And Katie, you do need to change that last paragraph to say that all of it's enforceable, that you wanted to add that?
I would just suggest that, it doesn't, it doesn't really add anything to the ordinance, it just means that any part of it that's no longer, that is not valid, would, would not make the whole ordinance invalid. Uh, I, I.
It's already in effect.
Madam Chair.
Smack.
Um, if I may say something, um, last month, we had our litter officers and our building official here, and they did ask that we fix this so they could do their job. And that's what we're asking tonight, is that they're be able to fix, that we fix this, that they can do their job. That, and I agree with my, uh, fellow board members here, I like, uh, some of the language, yes. But I will say, on the, um, on the citizens taking citizens to task, that's gonna cost that citizen some money. It's not like you can just go right out there and do it for free. So they're all gonna have to pay their court cost and everything else, are they not, when they use this ordinance?
I'm not sure that there is a filing fee on that, 'cause it's not as, I don't know if it gets treated as a civil case, that's something I could look into, because it, if you violate the ordinance, it's a class two misdemeanor. So normally, when you take out the warrant, um, I don't, and I don't do enough criminal work, but I can, I can look into that. I don't know if, if they were found not guilty, like if I, if I had a warrant taken out on you, Luanne, and it, and, and I, and you were found not guilty, I don't know that the, I don't know if the costs get assessed to me, I don't know if that's the way it works. Now, that's the way it works in a civil case, if it's, if it's treated civilly, there's a filing fee that has to be paid, and it has to be served, and that may be how it's treated in the courts. That's something I can look into and report back to you all on.
Well, it would lend a, a certain amount of comfort, I guess, to those that are dealing with this issue, um, and it, it, it would be, and I'm not, I'm not an attorney, so I'm not trying to take your place, but it seems to me like that the court is not gonna do this for free, and they're not going to listen to these complaints arbitrarily, um, for free, and deal with it for free. So someone besides us, the taxpayers, is gonna have to pay for that if I decide to take my next door neighbor to task.
Well, and, and if, if someone is found guilty, it's always that person who the costs are assessed to. But, I mean, if they're not guilty, I don't know that, in that particular case, again, like a civil case, you have to pay the filing fee, but I don't know if there's a filing fee associated with this where it's a class two misdemeanor.
Any other comments? Steve, you wanna make a motion to this?
I think that, okay, I'm gonna make this motion. I do not like the, the private, the ability of a private citizen to, but I understand that's part of the law, and, and it's there now, okay? So my, I'll make this motion with the understanding that I wanna work on that personal, a citizen being able to bring action some way. And, and I would hope that the board would agree me, with me on that, that we can come back and try to figure out how we can de-weaponize this thing. But I, I'll make a motion that we allow Katie to change the codes to the current code, that we add the paragraph about forty hours community service, that we keep the fines as they are now, at twenty, two fifty and twenty-five hundred, that we allow you to add the last paragraph about if one issue is found, uh, to be not applicable, all the rest will stand by themselves, and that we add, change the ten days to fourteen days. Have I got them all now?
Yes, and in the ordinance, I will just reflect that the forty hours will become effective July first, but everything else will be effective today.
Yes, that, that it will be effective July first.
And I'll second that.
All right, Tim? All right, all those in favor?
Aha.
Anyone opposed?
I am.
Okay, David, all right. Patience in the first, it's Mr. Jim Baldwin of the Cumberland Plateau playing district to be discussing the Dainte Regional Sewer Project Resolution. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Chairwoman. Um, what you have, and I hope you got my last and best iteration of this resolution, Lonzo. But this is a resolution authorizing the submission of a block grant application in the amount of two point five million dollars for the Dainte Regional Sewer Line Extension Project. This is a very important project, I think, for the county and all the communities along Clinch River, addressing, uh, water quality issues in Lick Creek and the Clinch River. Been working for several months with, uh, the PSA, uh, and with their engineers on putting that together. If we need to, I can read it. Oh, okay, good. So, uh, this is typical resolution, uh, that is required on a grant application. The grant application's opened Thursday. I hope to submit by Wednesday of this week. I've been working on it as if I was gonna present it, uh, submit it. So, uh, this resolution sets forth the parameters of the funding, uh, the number of households it's gonna positively impact, that's two hundred and forty, six hundred and fifteen persons. Uh, and the resolution authorizes a submission, and that the county administrator can sign all the documents pertaining to it, which I have with me. There are four sets of assurances that are required, they have to be in the application. Uh, we've done this maybe hundreds of times before, so it's nothing new. So, uh, I respectfully submit the application to the board for their consideration.
All right, do we have a motion to accept this application, this, his resolution for this application?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept, um, the resolution as presented by Cumberland Plateau.
Thank you, do we have a second?
I'll second.
David, all right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aha.
Anyone opposed? All right.
I have a, the resolution for you to sign, uh, Rebecca, and if Steve would attest it, since he's close.
Everybody's signing their sig, their names here. All right, we'll move on, and we'll have him ready to come in. The next is Mr. Dustin Keith with the Upper Tennessee River Roundtable. Just right there in the middle, sir, thank you.
Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening, uh, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, thank you very much. Um, you all had requested some additional information about the roundtable from a request we had submitted to you last month. So I'm Dustin Keith, I'm the chair this year of the Upper Tennessee River Roundtable. We are a nonprofit organization with an overall interest in improving water quality in southwest Virginia, representing a total of nine counties and two cities. Our major rivers include the Clinch, Holston and Powell. Our name is a little bit confusing, because we are entirely based in southwest Virginia, but Upper Tennessee is the name of the watershed, uh, that includes the Clinch, Holston and Powell Rivers. So that, that name predated our organization, but we are very much southwest Virginia focused. The mission of our organization is to achieve clean water throughout the watershed with the involvement of the community in planning, education, coordination, attracting resources, and serving as an advocate for healthy watersheds. The roundtable formed in two thousand, uh, the year two thousand, we celebrated twenty years last year, and has grown into a tremendous network of partnerships among state and federal agencies, local governments like you, stakeholder groups, businesses and industries, nonprofits, volunteers and many others. Over the past twenty-one years, we have garnered millions of dollars of grant funding and private contributions uh, from individuals and corporations, along with countless volunteer service hours, uh, that have been leveraged to complete hundreds of restoration, conservation, education and cleanup projects throughout southwest Virginia. Many of these have taken place in Russell County. Uh, in your packet, our executive director, Carol Dos, who couldn't be here this evening, she put together, uh, just a selection of projects, uh, that have been completed specifically in Russell County. So looking at those, uh, we kind of look at four different, uh, areas of service or projects that we do. One of our most significant is in education and outreach. We do a lot of symposiums and summits with, uh, students in Russell County Public Schools and all over southwest Virginia. Um, every year, we hold the Clinch River Youth Summit. And we also hold the Clinch River Environmental Education Symposium for STEM teachers, where we get to work with teachers and show them, uh, hands-on projects that they can do outside, uh, in southwest Virginia in our streams and rivers to educate kids on, uh, water quality. Uh, other things, um, we are working a lot with, uh, groups, uh, like Kelly McBride's group here in Russell County with the Clinch Water Watch, regional stream cleanups and community cleanups. We, uh, have a great partner in Brian Ferguson. Brian is an excellent, um, invaluable resource to Russell County. We're pleased to partner with him on a lot of things for cleanup, uh, projects, and then also on, um, things like hazardous waste collections. We've previously contributed some funding for some of those, uh, collection events. Educated workshop training on River Works Discovery Program, rain barrels. Probably some of you have attended a rain barrel workshop, where you get to create your own rain barrel that you can use to collect rainwater from your garage, your shed, your house, and use it in your garden, so forth. Um, we install rain gardens, uh, so sometimes if you have areas where you have significant erosion or runoff of water, that can cause damage, uh, we can come in and help provide information and supplies to create a rain garden to stop erosion. So we also, um, like I mentioned, do a lot of stream bank restoration projects. Um, we have great partners with groups like the Canaan Valley Institute, uh, at West Virginia, and we leverage a lot of grant funding from the state and federal governments to do stream bank restoration projects to help rebuild some of the, uh, natural erosion and unnatural erosion that's taken place over the years. So as you can see, uh, we're very active. This is, uh, our land and rivers and water systems are some of the most valuable resources we have in southwest Virginia, I think you all know that. So our group works very hard with a lot of different partners to try to keep those as healthy and vibrant as, as we can uh, for the next generation. So we wrote to you last month, uh, because the way our bylaws are structured, around two thousand, when a lot of roundtable groups were established, I think the governor at that time established roundtables all across the Commonwealth for each watershed. Uh, we wanted to make sure that the right people were on our board and had a seat at the table, so we included local governments, um, in that list, uh, as you get to have a representative on our board. So Russell County, from the beginning, has been able to appoint a member of the Roundtable Board of Directors. But currently, there is no representative, uh, from Russell County, whereas I'm on the board, I'm representing real estate development. Um, so we do need an additional member, uh, on the board from Russell County. Uh, I think we had talked about this a couple of years ago, I think I talked with the, the chair and with, uh, Ms. Wallace about, uh, a representative, and we weren't able to find anyone at that time. But we have had someone come forward, a student that I've worked with in the past at Lebanon High School, uh, Mr. Nathaniel Raznick. He has just graduated from Virginia Tech with a degree in environmental science, and he is now working for the Virginia Department of Health in environmental, um, services. And he has expressed an interest and a willingness to serve on our board from Russell County. He does reside, um, on Morning Star Circle in Lebanon. Um, so if you all have any other questions about the roundtable, or any questions about, um, Mr. Raznick, I'd be happy to answer those. Then also, just wanna put a bug in your ear about funding. Um, it has been difficult, we'll admit, over the past couple of years. Grants seem to be harder to obtain, there's more competition for grants, and also bigger groups seem to have more. And also bigger groups seem to have more, um, leverage sometimes in getting those grants. Um, so funding has been an issue recently. Um, previously each, uh, su, Board of Supervisors has contributed funding towards the roundtable. Several still do. Uh, it has been a little while since Russell County has contributed funds to the roundtable. So just ask that you keep that in mind as you do budget meetings this year. Any little bit is greatly appreciated and goes a long way. Uh, so thank you very much, and are there any questions? Yes, please.
Stand it.
Yes.
At this time, if any board member would like to nominate Mr. Raznick for this position, are any discussion?
I'll nominate Mr. Raznick.
All right.
I'll say.
Second with the call, all right. Any other discussion? Any other folks? All right, all those in favor of placing Mr. Raznick on this board?
Ah.
Anyone opposed? All right, we'll put you a member and he's interested in.
Madam Chair, if I can, uh, say something, thank you for coming. Thank you for your organization. Um, I have been a part of that before, um, as a former board member. And, um, the work that is done by the Upper Tennessee River Roundtable is phenomenal. And our discussion a moment ago about ordinances, and I'm surprised you didn't speak to that. But anyway, uh, the discussion a moment ago concerning all the ordinances that we've been talking about, this organization I have participated with that has actually cleaned up, uh, dump sites. So keep this in mind, uh, to my peers here tonight, that it's a valuable organization. We now have a member, and, um, I think that we need to look at some funding. So I'm gonna put that right out there so the public knows that I'm very supportive of your organization, and you're right, every little bit helps. But I've been on tire, uh, at tire dumps that cost a lot of money to clean up, and Upper Tennessee River Roundtable did this. So this is a good thing. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. Thank you, board, appreciate it. And I'll do a plug to that end also for our website, uh, which is uppertnriver.org. There are, uh, there's a signup link if you want to volunteer for a cleanup. Um, it's been difficult during the pandemic to host those, but as I'm sure things ease up, things get better, we'll have more. So follow our Facebook page and go to our website for cleanup opportunities and ways to donate as well. Thank you very much, board, appreciate it.
All right, guys. So we have a couple of committee members here tonight, and, uh, Jennifer Chumley and Ms. Alice Mayne, and we have Angela Carpenter, who is the chamber director, and she attends our meetings as, um, ex officio. And anybody else here? So, all right, so it's a great night to be on the agenda. It's really nice to hear all the talk about the Clinch River and the initiatives through, um, Cumberland to get these grants and, uh, help clean up the river. And we also have, um, a lot of stuff with, um, what Dustin was talking about that's really great, too. And then, of course, trash, um, bringing in tourism. It's really nice to have these clean roads and everything, and I really appreciate the, um, the community work program that helps us really diligently. And, uh, it's a really big help when we have all these people traveling. So this evening, I'm really excited that we have this awesome new website. And our IT department here, Mr. Johnson, he is gonna help us scroll through the new website. So I don't have a podium, so I'm gonna come over here so you all can get a good view here. So we had a couple of technical issues, and, um, everything was just increasingly becoming more outdated. So we were able to get this really great new website here developed pretty fast. Um, back in January, we noticed that we were just having some major issues, getting our maps to show up, um, pictures to upload. Uh, we were using another program that was just very outdated, and it was just difficult to work with. So here we go on our new experience, russell.com. Um, April the first, we officially launched it. And then, so Mr. Johnson's gonna show us here some of our more advanced features. All the pages, they really load up much faster. And as you can see, scrolling through some of our tabs, they coincide with our brochure. So any, um, guests of the county or locals who pick up a brochure can also go online, and it's all the same kind of info. We've got interactive links here, and Kayla, would you like to go to one of those and show them? So you can see how easily we can get to some of our local outfitters, our restaurants, our specialty shops, and we have some awesome gallery pictures here. Everything's just so clean, and when you go on here, you can actually turn it to the mobile site. But then you can also work really easily. I know we can't show that to you tonight, but when you're actually preparing it in the background, you can actually work on your desktop version and switch over to the mobile site, view it, and you can see exactly how it'll come up on your phone. And if you don't like something, you can tweak it there, too. So this is obviously a live-in website, so anytime we have new specialty shops, uh, local restaurants, activities, events, we can just hop on here and continuously update it. And we've also have, of course, our Facebook and Instagram. But the pictures are really awesome on here, and we have a lot of great people around here that contribute photos, and of course, I get out and take some any chance that I get. But I think they really highlight the county. We have so much natural beauty and assets on these pictures. So today, we had a conversation with, uh, VTC on our monthly meeting. And, um, Dave Nudick, who was with the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation, he actually informed us today that our natural area preserves, and especially the channels are now at full capacity with visitors once again. So if you see, like, here's the channels. Um, if you see me kind of downplay, um, our marketing right now on these sites, um, he's asked that we kind of, kind of keep it down low right now because they are really at capacity, and they, um, they really hate turning people away. So this summer, we may be a little low on that, but, um, we will be marketing, um, especially with the Fish Virginia First. I've submitted all my information to them, and so that's gonna be really great to, um, advertise the Clinch and all of our fishing opportu, opportunities, our outfitters. And I hope I can show that to you pretty soon when they get everything together. And in the future, I do hope that we can get some, um, I guess we'd say some action videos. I've got some willing, uh, volunteers who are gonna take some, like, bird's eye view, going down our mountain trails or hiking and all things like that. So we can post some videos on here, um, some of our favorites, like the channels and the pinnacles. We may have to wait just a little longer before we can do that, but, um, hopefully as things, um... I just don't think they're gonna really wind down because right now outdoors is what people want, and some of our tourism committee members, um, I think they've seen the uptick in some of the outdoor activities that they offer in their communities. And, oh, one other thing, in the future, we really hope that we could get some kind of like an interactive app that you could easily put on your mobile device and hop right on to this website and not have to type in Experience Russell to get to it. So that is in the works. I still have some companies that are trying to help me with the idea. So hopefully there'll be something in the future that we'll be able to incorporate with, um, this website, or Instagram, or Facebook, and all that. And that's about all I have, and if you have any questions, I love to answer them. If I can breathe.
I think this is really impressive. Uh, one of the things that I'd had a conversation, conversation with Jeff Rose. He's a musician, and they have started a songwriters guild, and they've got a lot of participation, uh, from people that are coming in and writing songs and lyrics to songs. And I'd ask him, I put in like a request, uh, to have them work on a song for Russell County.
Okay.
For this region. Uh, I had talked to a couple of other musicians also about it. Uh, that might be something good that you guys could partner with, and maybe if the song could be written through his organization is to work with Jeff. And he had asked me about, was there any types of funding out there that could help them to do something like this? And, you know, for songwriters and musicians and stuff like that. And we ha, they have a lot of young people participating, a lot of older people, middle-aged. It's just a variety. And that might be good if they could do something and produce that and be able to put it in the background of this website, a song dedicated and written just primarily for what you guys are doing, but I just thought I'd throw it out.
Yeah, um, any ideas that you have, just, you know, give me a call, and we could definitely get in connection with them because, um, on our drone videos, we actually were fortunate enough to have two new ones done in, uh, twenty twenty, and they are featured on the website, and of course, they've been on the Facebook some as well. Uh, we did have some action music, and then we also had, um, Caitlin Baker at one time had done like a southwest Virginia song, and it was very lovely, but if we could have a county song, that would be even more amazing. And, um, we have an awesome IT team here that, um, is really, really great at helping me incorporate all the technology side of this, and I think it would be great. So just definitely keep me in mind and get them in connection with me.
I'll, I'll tell Jeff, I'm actually a member of that, even though I've never written a song.
Um, of the group?
I come there for moral support.
Is this perhaps what I was privileged to say on Friday? Maybe? I've, I've, I'm finding out more secrets all the time. We have rockers on this board.
That's the Appalachian Songwriters Forum, I believe is the formal name of it.
Okay.
Ed Young is involved in it. They actually did an event, I think it was a week or so ago, Friday, Friday, two weeks ago at the brewery, and they all came in and played some original stuff and such. And I think they're planning on doing it again. It was pretty successful. They said it was standing room only, and it was a...
Yeah, well, uh, definitely when we, um, actually are gonna be making some of these action videos, some of that music, um, could actually go along with some of our themes. And, uh, if we just have somebody who's willing to work with me and get everything coordinated, I think that would be great.
Another opportunity, let me throw this at you real quick, while it's on my mind. I don't know, but Carl Ray's daddy and him, he's been handing me about the pea pickers.
Mm-hmm.
About the pea pickers, and you know, they even played at the Grand Ole Opry. And Carnegie Hall.
Oh, yes.
Sorry.
In New York.
Sorry, Carl. Sorry. But, you know, uh, he had actually asked us, and I'm gonna go ahead and throw it out there to the board to look at, they, they got an area down at the park they'd like to name, uh, after them. There may be the shed or something like that, but it just, I'll give the board something to think about, but we'll bring it back to the next meeting. But, you know, they're older, they've lost a lot of members and stuff, but they had a lot of success. They played a lot of venues, but I didn't want to steal Carl, but since he's dead, I thought I'd bring it out.
One more thing while we're just throwing stuff out there. I found out something last week that just shocked me, and that's that David Eaton once played with Alabama.
Well, that's when I was younger. My mom was a very religious lady, and I was playing on people's CDs and tapes in Trail Records in Kingsport, Tennessee. Just so it happened, that's when Alabama got their rise in fame, and they showed up down there. We were able to eat with them, and I was able to play on one of their, uh, cut albums. And, uh, so that was an honor for me to be able to do that, but, uh, I, I didn't know Steve was gonna throw that at me. I did not.
Well, I really appreciate everything, and, uh, I'm in the process of getting rack cards together. And some of the music that we had, we kind of plan to make our rack cards to where we can put on the website and have the, the music in the segments of where you can click on the rack cards. You can download them and enjoy music if you're looking on them here. But they're gonna feature more in-depth things, like our specialty shops. They'll have, um, you know, just more of their information and restaurants and the historical items, and just a few, um, hiking and, uh, waterfalls. Just, um, kind of everything's just gonna coincide together here. Thank you, and I'm really excited about the Fish Virginia First, and I really appreciate you all's support on that because we really need to be, um, highlighting our Clinch, and that they're having a new marketing initiative, and I'm, I really think it's gonna be awesome the way they're gonna be able to market us through what I have provided them. And once they get it, uh, launched with all the information that I secured for them, um, I'd be more than happy to bring it and show it to you guys. Um, I, I really think it's gonna look nice, and it's really gonna get us out there 'cause, uh, with the state park, you know, it's, it's official, and all this stuff is just gonna keep working together. And we, we're really gonna be pushing state parks, and I really hate that, like, the channels and the pinnacles, we may not be able to highlight them as much, but it's not a problem because the reason is because they're, they're overrun. And so it's, it's a great issue to have, and I'm really excited that I was able to use some grant money to, uh, do a featured ad that's coming out in the, uh, Blue Ridge, um, outdoors in May, and it's, um, they kind of had backed off that was gonna be their, um... That was gonna be their event issue, but since the pandemic with all the guidelines were still iffy, they kind of scaled back on that and made it a camping edition. And I've, uh, been so excited. I've been working with Ms. Jennifer over here this, um, past week or two on, uh, getting some information, and it's gonna be, uh, like a fourth-page ad on just our, um, campground over there. And that's really gonna help Cleveland out, um, 'cause it, it is a pricey ad, and it's gonna get some exposure, and, um, it's also gonna come inside of a couple of our local festivals in June, like the Clinch River Days and the Two Day Music Festival here in town. So, um, that's one of our major marketing areas that's just very pricey to get into, and I felt fortunate to be able to, to help what I could. And I will bring you a copy of that as soon as it's out.
Make sure you talk to Shane, 'cause, you know, and I'm sure you already have.
Oh, Mr. Farmer.
Town, that's town has planned.
Me and Shane's been working really hard together on a few things, and I just, um, provided them a support letter as well for their, um, corporate park idea that they want right over here they've been clearing off for. They're fighting for some funding for trails, um, an amphitheater, maybe a little doggy park. So, um, I was happy to be able to work with Shane to, to get a little bit of support their way 'cause it's, that's gonna help in their grant application. Thank you.
You need to present your, um, bylaws to us?
If you would like to go ahead, I don't mind at all, um, just to go ahead and, if you have any questions, I'll just stay here if you wanna switch to it in your, um...
We need a motion to accept them. Has everyone, do you need to read her, uh, the bylaws for the tourism committee?
Yeah, they're just, uh, being brought up to date to be in line with the Heart of Appalachia, which is our regional, um, tourism authority here.
I'll make a motion, we approve those.
I'll say.
All right, any, um, any discussion?
I just hear from all the board, I mean, this, this is, you're reviewing all the bylaws, and you're good with everything, all of them, okay.
All right. All right, all those in favor of accepting the, uh, Russell County Tourism Bylaws?
Ah.
Anyone opposed? All right.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you all.
All right, the next item on our agenda is approval of our minutes. Um, the first is for March the first, our regular meeting. And there was a couple of things in there that I noticed. Uh, Mr. Keane is from Belfast, not Honeaker, and our, uh, executive session was after the meeting, not five. And Lou, I think you had something you noticed that needed to be corrected before we accept them?
Uh, yes, and I, I discussed this with, uh, uh, Mr. Breeding and Mr. Eaton, and there's a motion in there to accept the Fish Virginia First. there's a motion in there to accept the Fish Virginia first and, uh, so that needs to be fixed because it says, uh, David Eaton made the motion and David Eaton seconded it. So they're going to have to fistfight over who gave you the first and the second back there.
Okay. All right. With those, with those items corrected, do we have a motion to accept the, uh, minutes for the March first meeting?
I'll make it in second. No, I'm just kidding. I'll make it.
David.
I'll second.
I'll second. All right. With that, is any discussion? All those in favor?
Aha.
Anyone opposed? All right. The second set of minutes is for our March eighth, which was just the continuation of government, the continuance of government, that we had to renew for six months. So do I have a motion to accept those minutes for March the eighth?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Carl and Steve, you'll second? All those in favor?
Aha.
I'll need abstain. I didn't get to make it. I thought I was on baby watch right there and I was having a grandbaby.
Oh, I thought you had gone to the funeral. I'm sorry. Okay.
Hell, I did, but I had to leave the funeral.
Okay. One abstention and seven for, all right, that's six for. Thank you. Next is the approval of our expenditures. Do I have a motion to accept and pay all of our bills?
So move.
David, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Lou, thank you. All those in favor?
Aha.
Anyone opposed? Guess we better pay those bills. All right. The next thing on our agenda is the committee appointments and this is for the Daint Community Center. Do we have any motions for that?
I do, and, uh, if I may, I checked with those community members that are listed on, uh, our, um, board packet. And, uh, they all wish to serve again. So, um, I'm asking for a mo, I'm going to make a motion that we, uh, reappoint Bobby Gullett, Wanda Osborne, and Arthur Phillips back to the Daint Community Center Board.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, David. All right. All those in favor?
Aha.
Anyone opposed? Next is the, uh, Russell County Planning Commission. And Carl, this is your district, uh, Mr. Charles Edmonds. He had a four-year term and it, it has expired.
Okay, I'd like to table this till next month because we're getting some late, uh, applications.
And you want to ask them and see if they want to serve? Okay.
Yes.
All right. All right. The next is, uh, number four is for the, um, uh, CPMT, uh, committee and we did get a letter. It is from Dr. Karen Shelton. The, um, CSA Board has to have a representative from the Health Department. And Dr. Karen Shelton, who's the Director of the Health Department, is recommending Amy Atkins. She is the Nurse Supervisor for Russell County. She will be the representative for the, um, CPMT meeting. So do we have a, um, nomination for Amy Atkins? This is based on Dr. Shelton's recommendation.
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Steve, Lou. All right. All those in favor?
Aha.
Anyone opposed? All right. Our next item is the Citizens Comment Period. Do we have anyone, citizens? Did you pick up? First is, uh, a Mr. Michael Hale. Mr. Hale. It's a discussion of the roadway and water for Blade Hill Drive. Mr. Hale. No? All right. Next is Joe Ratliff. If you care, state your name and, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Joe Ratliff and I'm the Director of Four County Transit, the public transit provider for Russell County. Uh, I'd just like to take the opportunity to, uh, thank the board for your support. Uh, the, the support and the local match that you give us, uh, qualifies us to receive the funding through the state to operate the service and we do appreciate it. The main thing I wanted to mention, uh, on the replacement of our buses as they exceed their useful life. Uh, we normally ask each county, uh, for a one percent match to qualify us for the funding through the state to replace them. Uh, we didn't ask for that this year and I don't believe we asked last year. But I did want to mention that, that sometime in the future, uh, we'll probably need to request that. And when we do, I hope the board will consider it for funding. And thank you once again.
Thank you. Mr. Brian Beck?
Yes, I'm Brian Beck. Uh, I am the Chief Financial Officer at Appalachian Agency for Senior Citizens. We operate Four County Transit. And, uh, just to tail into what Joe had mentioned, uh, he has been able to receive hundred percent funding for buses, but he does have to ask for those grants over a year in advance. So we would continue to make the request to you all ahead of time. Uh, we just, and we hope that it's appropriated. We then hope that we do not have to invoice and request. And like I s, like you, uh, mentioned, it's been a one percent, uh, from each of four counties. Uh, we get seven hundred thousand in new buses and you pay seven thousand. It's a pretty good return on investment to keep, uh, buses in the community that are about one to four years old on average. Uh, in addition, I just, uh, wanted to thank the board for allowing me to, to speak and, uh, as far as Appalachian Agency for Senior Citizens, we do not have a significant ask and no additional funding. Uh, but we do request, uh, annually support for insurance for the clubs, uh, that operate. I think there's still eight clubs in operation in Russell County. Uh, we make that request on their behalf and then they utilize our tax exempt, uh, status. Uh, we also make a five thousand dollar request to support, uh, home delivered meals. This is Meals on Wheels. And the funding for that program is in excess of half a million. So spread across four counties, obviously Tazewell and Russell being the, the most per capita. Uh, that is where a lot of those dollars are spent. So five thousand again is a great return. Uh, we also, uh, administration of all of the nearly two million in aging services funding. Uh, we do have an administrative pool and that requires a twenty-five percent match also. And we have, um, that is a lump sum request that we've submitted typically in January and we would like to, um, it has been, it's varied between forty-seven hundred and fifty dollars and five thousand dollars and, uh, we wanted to clear up any confusion as to what that specifically was for, um, because I don't, do not think that has been, been paid. And then without, uh, getting us into too much trouble, you all, uh, spent a lot of time on a challenge earlier and we like to create or find the opportunity there. Through some additional funding within the last year, uh, we did develop a chore program where we may be able to come in and assist those that are over sixty, with some of those trash issues in their homes, uh, that have become a nuisance and a problem. It's not a lot of funding and we don't have a staff currently that's doing that, but that is something where we, if, we could work together and, uh, fix some of Russell County's, um, trash nuisance, nuisance issues. Uh, like I said, that's over sixty and currently we don't have a staff and a large pool of money, but it, it is an opportunity where we can work together. Uh, and I also wanted to bring, uh, notice to the fact that public transit is all through Four County. But we are trying to close the, some of the holes and gaps as far as medical transportation, veteran service transportation. Uh, and we have some funding and some grants that are allowing for some additional services and you can reach out to us for those. It's hard to get that word out to the public, but you all do know of veterans in your community. And, uh, the medical transportation can be to outside of the community. It can be for the return visits, uh, for specialists, but it can also take folks to Johnson City, Bristol, outside of our Four County service area. That's why we had to seek grants because public transit only allows for the four community, four counties that, uh, Four County Transit serves. Again, thank you all. Uh, do want to, if there is any confusion, we, we do want to continue to request the, uh, annual administrative match, uh, and that's in the amount, I think that was submitted of four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, and we'd like to see, that hasn't been paid, I do believe in a few years. Three years was, Alice Mead is a fantastic board member for Appalachian Agency for Senior Citizens. So she, uh, works, uh, you can imagine very closely with our accounting director, Carolyn Counts. But thanks again for, for board support and, uh, if you have any questions for me.
I've got a quick question that I brought up at our board meeting up there. Uh, I, I think it'd be a good idea to have a statement of services and what you guys do for all of our board members. Unless you've ever served on the board, you really don't have a clue. And until I got on that board, I realized what an impact you guys make in this region. And until you really realize it, but to have a, a statement of resources and some of the, like you're, you're talking about, some of the things you guys do, it would be good to have the, the numbers and why you, you know, why we justify doing that for the, for the public. Give them an idea of, you know, all these list of items that you guys, all the services you perform, what you do, the impact with the transit, the people, amount of people you pick up. A lot of those things would be very critical, I'm sure, to this board to have that information to, I, I'm in support of funding you because I now realize the importance of having that additional funding to be able to do, you know, do your job services.
Uh, we do operate over thirty programs. I mean, case management, um, we're doing a lot right now and we did not shut down at all during COVID. Uh, we're, we are complete with a two and a half million dollar building in Falls Mills, Virginia. Uh, Vasito was much in support of that. Uh, we are going to expand our service area to neighboring four counties only for that PACE program. That is the Medical Social Model Program that we operate as well. Yes, we welcome any of you who ever want to see what goes on at Appalachian Agency and Four County Transit. It's hard. We, we, we do have a list of programs and services offered and I can, uh, make sure that I get that to the board. But just a list doesn't really state everything that, that goes on behind the scenes. We have operate emergency, uh, program that we can do some heating and cooling assistance, fan care. Uh, we did, Alice participated at the Vocational Center. We did deliver over four hundred meal boxes and each of those was valued at fifty dollars at the time. Right at the outbreak of, of the pandemic, we tried to get food from our community into our community as rapidly as possible. So again, I, I can get a, uh, list of all of the resources that we can provide. Some have more funding, some have less funding. Through all of this, uh, obviously home delivered meals was the most well-funded. We did shut down the congregate meal sites for most of last year and they just reopened in March. Uh, we operate one in Daint. We also do the, uh, Swords Creek. We appreciate the Russell County Board working with us to obtain the old, uh, Swords Creek PSA building as it is in much better condition than the previous building.
I think your, I think your trash program for people over sixty is something that there's a big market for right now. In fact, I've got a lady that Heather put me on to, that I'm trying to figure out how to get a bunch of her stuff hauled off. She's.
It really, it's, it's a chore program and it's staffing it. We're not, you know, we're paying, we might be able to provide ten to fifteen hours of service. We can mow for those that just go into the hospital and come back out. We're, we're not a mowing service, but we can. If somebody falls behind and, and we need to catch them back up, we can do that.
She needs a bunch of stuff hauled off.
Yeah. And we, we can do that to a degree.
Well, it'd be a perfect opportunity for the race program, the educational piece of what we fund to get some of these community service airs for these kids and get them involved.
Because she's got a bunch of stuff needs to be hauled off.
I didn't mean to take too much time, but I, I do thank you all for your support.
Thank you guys.
All right. Next we have Kelly Delft, Kelly McBride Delft.
Listen, my children, and you shall hear of the midnight ride of Paul Revere on the eighteenth of April in seventy-five. Hardly a man is now alive who remembers that famous day and year. He said to his friend, "If the British march by land or sea from town tonight, hang a lantern aloft from the belfry arch of the old north church as a signal light. One if by land and two if by sea. And I on the opposite shore will be ready to ride and spread the alarm through every middlesex village and farm for the country folk to be up and to arm." I am Kelly McBride Delft and I am the Russell County Public Librarian. Uh, April is National Poetry Month. Um, I encourage you to read some poetry, maybe try to memorize one. I memorized the first part of that in, I don't know, junior high or high school. And one of my goals this last month was to add a stanza or two and I did. In the interest of time, I will not recite it and also in the interest of I'm not quite got it down. I'm really close. But, um, it's really long. It's going to take me the rest of my life to memorize it. Um, if you've read any contemporary literature like Isabel Allende's The Long Pedal of the Sea, um, each chapter begins with some poetry from Pablo Neruda. So we got a copy of his works because it was very intriguing to read those poems or pieces of poems at the beginning and it got people intrigued. April is also Citizen Science Month and you heard from Dustin about the Upper River Tennessee, Upper Tennessee River Roundtable. Um, Clinch Water Watch is going to be taking samples. In fact, if you're interested tomorrow afternoon, we're going to go do macro invertebrates and that is the part where you have to wade in the water. I'm hoping I can find my rubber boots. Um, but we're going to have fun and we're going to do another one sometime this month, probably on a Saturday. And on Sunday, the twenty-fifth, we're going to be on the creek side at Honeaker Community Library at two thirty and we're going to take some samples. Be a great activity for kids. I'm praying the weather's good, but I'm hoping by the end of April it'll be warm enough either way. And I hope you'll share that with folks. Um, and we're back. Thanks to the ongoing improvement and progress, we are doors open to the public. We have started live programming. So, um, if we, you see something about a program, you can come. We just ask that you register so that we are sure that we don't have too many people in too small a space, which, um, has not been a problem. So please come. Um, thank you.
Charles Collins, I believe he's already spoken. Jeff Kaiser, he's already spoken. And then Charlie Collins, I believe he's already spoken. Larry Hughes, I believe Mr. Hughes has spoken. Sean Vance.
My name's Sean Vance. I live at ninety-nine Willow Springs Drive, Lebanon, Virginia. I live in District One. My concern was about the condition of the road there going into Tombez Hollow. It's him you should know. Whoever designed that or whoever's planning on fixing that is an idiot. It's that simple. My wife has lost multiple days going to work. Now you all are Russell County Board of Supervisors. I understand it's VDOT, but VDOT is not God. The road is horrible. It's getting worse. Who digs a ditch along a road without stabilizing it? And now the water is undermining the road. My road went from being fifteen foot to eleven foot to nine foot to eventually somebody will be in a ditch. Who will pay to fix my vehicle? So, I understand it's a VDOT thing, but we are Russell County. I do pay taxes and everything else that goes along with it. So I would like somebody to tell VDOT, whoever's in charge of that, they're an idiot. Thank you.
And citizen comment time. Anyone else want to speak? All right, saying no. We'll close our citizen comment period. Constitutional officers, I don't see anyone. County attorney reports, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first thing I have for the board's consideration is the re-adoption of the user. Thank you, Madam Chair. The first thing I have for the board's consideration is the re-adoption of the user agreement for the Waste Management Authority. Um, there have been no changes to the agreement, and we adopted this just, I think, maybe last October. But we've set it for a review to be approved every year, um, to, to make sure that it's still working for the three counties. So, um, um, there is one change, and, um, I think it's got an effective date and a date of April, um, today's date on there. And those dates do need to be changed to reflect effective June the first, two thousand twenty-one.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the user agreement.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Carl, any discussion? Are all those in favor?
Wait, wait, wait.
Okay.
I asked, um, um, I'd like to know if we can get clarification on the plan of operation, just for clarification.
I will check on that. It's my understanding the other two boards that are a part of this, Buchanan County and Dickinson County, have already passed that. But I mean, I think, I think it's probably just a, it's referencing the ma, the manpower agreement that we approved last month. But we'll try to get that fixed and make sure that can be clarified going forward.
Right now, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aha.
Anyone opposed? All right, we'll accept that. And the next one, uh, Ms. Katie, is the resolution that we were given this afternoon.
Yes, Madam Chair, and I did receive this pretty late in the evening. But basically what this is, and this is a resolution that my understanding the county attorney from Tazewell County had drafted. Um, it, it's, the, the basic of it is it, is it opposes the House and Senate bill, which would, um, take away the coal employment production incentive tax credit and the coalfield employment enhanced tax credit after tax year twenty-twenty-one. Obviously, we are a county in the coalfields, and that would be, you know, have a significant impact on our economy. My understanding, and again, I got this probably in about twenty minutes before I came to see you all, is that the governor, um, did not, um, sign the, sign the law, the law, sign the bill into law, um, but suggested making a change of, of diverting that money into, um, UVA wise. Basically, what this resolution is, is you're opposing them doing that. The only, the only concern that I had is, and, and I didn't, you know, that I didn't have a great deal of time to, um, review this, is in the second to last paragraph, when it says, "Be it further resolved," that should the General Assembly remain committed to passing House Bill eighteen ninety-nine and Senate Bill twelve fifty-two, that Tazewell, well, the, the Russell County Board of Supervisors opposes the allocation of the annual projected revenues of the Coal Employment and Production Incentive Tax Credit and the Coalfield Employment Enhanced Tax Credit to the University of Virginia's College of Wise. What I would suggest is adopting this ordinance, but changing that. If you go back up into the body of the ordinance, into the whereas clauses, it states that, um, that this board finds that such a recommendation, the governor's recommendation that it go to UVA wise, is untimely and premature without consultation among all stakeholders in southwest Virginia. So, I would amend that before-mentioned paragraph to say that we oppose that, those tax credits going only to the University, um, of Virginia's College at Wise without, um, consultation among all stakeholders in southwest Virginia. Because that, that way, it's, it's putting in there that, um, you're asking the governor to, before he just unilaterally decides where this money's gonna go, to consult with everybody.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aha.
Anyone opposed?
That's all I have.
All right, next is the county administrators' reports and requests.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Excuse me. On the county administrator reports and requests, the first one on the agenda is, uh, the twenty-twenty-one March special election for the Senate of Virginia. Of course, this is between, uh, Mr. Hackworth and, uh, Mrs. Plotchwell. I would, uh, like a motion for acceptance on this.
So move.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aha.
Anyone opposed?
Of course.
Then we accept those numbers, that abstracted votes.
Of course, uh, Mr. Hackworth, he won the special election, and he is the representative, uh, for southwest Virginia now. Next on the county administrator, uh, reports is a notice from the Russell County Voters Registration Office. This is the notice of decertification of electronic poll book software. This is notification to the board supervisors that, uh, this equipment's gonna need replaced and why the conditions are, not just with the software itself, but the technical issues, the hardware that'll have to be replaced in the future. So, the Electoral Board said that laptops that are currently used that were sent to Russell County, which we've had in, in place since two thousand fifteen, uh, were compliant with the Department of Election, and operational memory was added in two thousand nineteen. I think Mr. Lovelace helped us with the upgrade of the, uh, the memory in these. But now with the new software that's been installed, we're gonna have to look at new laptops, so. And, and we'll be working with the, uh, voter registration. I'll just make sure that's done.
We've got two years out of them anyway.
Yeah.
Two more years.
What's the price tag on that one, sir?
Uh, they are, we're still looking at ranges. We don't have a definite, and we'll come back to the board on that.
What about this new software that you're talking about? That, that's mandated by the state.
That, that's mandated by the state.
Same group that had us mandated the voting machines.
I, I can attest to that one, yes, but, yeah, the, uh, yeah. The CenterPoint ePoll Tab version point one, that was, uh, by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. It's made by DM Tech Advocate Software.
So she'll bring you that information and you can present it to us?
Absolutely. Next on the county administrator reports is, of course, you know, continuation with the pandemic, the vaccine promotion. We are working with, uh, the Virginia Department of Health and, uh, the National Guard. The board supervisors has, uh, conveniently gave up the, uh, conference room during this time for pandemic shots, during these times for clinics, to be able to get, uh, vaccines to, uh, all Russell County citizens that wanted to receive them during this time. And now we're going through from, uh, Phase One A to Phase One B to C, One C. They are now looking at doing clinics here and also doing drive-throughs. The first one will be at the Castlewood High School. And of course, uh, we have been promoting this on our websites and our, our, our Facebook and Emergency Management. And of course, the partners are, of course, Russell County Board of Supervisors, the Virginia Department, uh, of Health, uh, the Virginia National Guard, Russell County Emergency Management, Cleveland Life Saving Crew. And of course, the Dane Rescue will be at this, at this event. They will be there, uh, to, uh, as a vaccination, and this will be through the Johnson and Johnson.
Now, is this for ages sixteen and up?
This is for ages sixteen and up.
Okay.
One C.
Eighteen.
I'm sorry, yes.
Eighteen?
Eighteen. It's what the message I was given.
Let me, let me get a little bit more clarity on that, so, because I got, I got one that says, we'll, we'll get clarity on that.
Yeah. He's, he's, he's gonna find out.
I'll find out. Yeah, yes, sir.
But it is at Castlewood High School.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Of course, the Russell, Russell County, the first is on the county administrator request, is the Tourism Advisory Committee bylaws that was previously approved. This, uh, just a little, if I own this, this was ones that were reviewed by Virginia Tourism and also the Heart of Appalachia, and of course, the TAC Tourism Advisory Committee. Next is a VDOT request. Uh, this is no more than some house cleaning. This is a VDOT resolution on the Gilmer Subdivision Road and the Grand Haven Road. This is a request from VDOT, uh, on the Gilmer Subdivision. Is the remaining portion of Route six fifty-four north of Lebanon Corporate Limits that will remain in the VDOT system to Lebanon, assuming that the maintenance of the streets, because of this section is so far separated from the rest of six fifty-four, which is the entire south of Lebanon Corporate Limits, it is being renumbered to Route nine ninety-eight. Grand Haven was originally designed as Route eight ninety-nine, but because it is not properly added, was not properly added when the project was done and completed in two thousand one. Route eight ninety-nine was assigned to a different route in two thousand sixteen. To eliminate the double numbering issue, Grand Haven will be renumbered to Route nine 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 instead. In this event, that, that it is in the project number for the Grand Drive from two thousand one, which is project number eight ninety-nine oh dash oh eighty-three dash three eighty-seven. This is house keeping, housekeeping up on the board supervisors. This is a resolution. So, we can formally rename these na, numbers based off the road classification. I'll need a motion for the pass of the resolution.
Uh, do we have a motion to accept VDOT's resolution on this road?
So move, Madam Chair.
All right, Steve, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Tim, any discussion? Are all those in favor?
Aha.
Anyone opposed? Alonso?
Next on the county administrator reports and requ, or request is the cigarette and meal tax public hearing. I need a motion for the, uh, cigarette and meal tax for the next regular board of supervisors meeting on, uh, May the third, two thousand twenty-one.
Do we have a motion to set that date for a public hearing, May the third, on cigarette and meal tax public hearing?
So move, Madam Chair.
Lou, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Oris, any discussion? Are all those in favor?
Aha.
And note that Mr. Brady is absent, please. All right.
Next on the county administrator request is the, uh, the Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator position. I'm requesting that the board supervisors table this until we have an opportunity to talk, uh, with the current, uh, uh, deputy, uh, of Emergency Management to, and then, uh, we'll come back before the board again. I ask the ta, uh, permission from the board to table this until further notice.
So move.
Second.
Okay, all right. Lou, all those in favor?
Aha.
Thank you. All right, uh, the next thing is a budget workshop, which is simply be a workshop. There will be no legal movement, no motions made. It's just a review of the, uh, budget that we've been working on, hoping we will get some more final numbers from the state and federal government as to our funding within the county. And I'm gonna set that for next Monday at one o'clock. So, okay, all right. We'll, we'll give you everything. We'll get, we'll make sure you get a copy of it. We're just gonna discuss what we've done. All right, okay, next. And, uh, we're trying to get it worked in with our other meeting that we've got next Monday. So, but we'll, we'll make sure you get a copy of it, Austin, and come in and just catch up with Alonso. All right, next thing we have is matters presented by the board. Tim, do you have anything?
No, ma'am.
All right, David?
Yes, I've got, uh, the Holnickor Kids Fishing Day is gonna be May the first. Uh, I know our, uh, board, uh, I'd like to ask our board to maybe give them a contribution or donation. It's a really big event, and we're trying to get back to the nor, normalities here. Uh, and, uh, I don't, I don't know. I think, did we give them something the last time?
Do you have any of your discretionary funds left? Well, I do, so I'll, I'll share with you.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it, Madam Chair. Thank you. Thank you.
I'll do it. I got some money. Yeah, I'll share.
Can I second that in, in thirty?
I just wanted to make a comment about some of the comments on the trash. People were talking about the Hamelin facility being an issue, and, and I wish we could have made mention about the project over in Sun that's underway. You know, that, that's gonna resolve a lot of those issues. I'll just make another pitch. Sooner we can get to all-man sites, the better off we're gonna be, and we're not gonna have any more of these issues. They may not be quite as convenient as some of these are, but we'll do away with all the bear issues and all the, you know, issues of trash. And, and when we get to those man sites, we can, we can have longer hours, I think. So, I'll just put a plug in for that.
Thank you, Steve. And if I can add on to, I know you didn't call on me, Madam Chair, but if I can tag on to what, uh, my peers are saying behind me. We, the, our last meeting, um, Mr. Lester gave us the plan, and we discussed it, and that we're gonna try to move forward with this. So, I, I hate that everybody can, is not watching us on our live feed, but that's been on our, our radar, and we're looking at that. So, I thank, uh, I thank you all for, for being so supportive of my district. I appreciate it.
Oris, do you have any comments?
You said you'd, um, table this about, uh, the emergency management until what time?
Until I can bring it before the board. I, I can't go into personnel issues in, in open, so I just wanted, yes, sir. Yes, sir, or sooner.
Or sooner.
All right, Lou, anything else?
Uh, no, thank you. I took my time with, with Mr. Brady. Thank you.
Madam Chair, could I take that back and have one little thing?
One thing?
What became of the issue that was on the, uh, on the ballot last time about waiving one vehicle from personal property tax? That, I understand that it passed the voters, but the, it's, is it still tied up in Richmond? Or what is the deal with that? For veterans, I'm sorry, for veterans.
I, I don't know.
Exempting one vehicle from personal property tax.
It didn't pass? I'll, I'll check on that to, and, and let you know if there's any, if it, if it did pass, if there's anything we can do.
Okay, thank you.
But I'm not, I'm not aware.
Okay. Carl?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to resort back to Mr. Eaton there. Uh, I think for the last few years, uh, we always give each kids' fishing day a certain amount of money from the county. And, uh, I'd like to continue that if we can and go back and look at what we give before. I know, uh, the kids, Russell County Kids Fishing Day, I don't think's gonna happen this year. But, I mean, this one here is going on, and, uh, if I recall, I think it was five hundred or a thousand dollars we give the year before last.
How much money you got there, Madam Chair?
Sorry. Sorry, boys.
See, Carl, you're messing me up here.
Sorry. Don't have that much. I would if I could, but I don't have that much. So. All right. All right, I don't have anything either. So, at this time, I will take a motion for adjournment, and our next meeting will be May the third, the twenty. We're not gonna reconvene for the, the others, just gonna be a workshop. We won't make any motions or do anything that day. You'll just get all the budget and look at it and see what we've done.
Mad, Madam Chair, I, I, I've previously taken this up at the school, where I still think, you know, because you all are going to assemble, you know, you should adjourn to reconvene just for the best protection under FOIA.
Okay.
Obviously, you board members can be together and not have to declare a meeting, because, but as long as you don't discuss business. But it's just, for me, if you're gonna be discussing business, whether you're voting on anything or not, you should, you should have an official meeting.
Okay, all right, that'll be fine.
I'll make it motion.
So, I'll take a motion.
Yeah.
That we will reconvene next Monday. David?
All right.
One, yeah. And do we have a second? Okay, thank you, Oris. All right, we will meet next Monday at one o'clock, go over the budget. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aha.
Aha, with the understanding that won't be there.